The Riviera Beach Planning and Zoning Board Meeting of November 12, 2015.
We'll have a moment of silence and then stand for the pledge. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Velasquez, roll call please.
Cedric Barber II.
Pardon.
Cedric McCoy.
Margaret Shepherd.
Here.
Julius Wiggum. Ryan Holton. Renee James.
Here.
Edward Knutti.
Here.
Call the president.
Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Good afternoon, Jeff Gaggen, Planning and Zoning Administrator. We have no additions or deletions to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Any disclosures by board members about this project? Can we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'm going to adopt the agenda as it is.
Second.
Call the room.
Cedric Barber II.
Yes.
Margaret Shepherd.
Yes.
Renee James.
Yes.
Edward Knutti.
Yes.
Would you approve?
Motion to approve the minutes of October 8th, 2015.
Take the motion that we approve the minutes from the October 18th, 2015 meeting.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. Call the room.
Cedric Barber II.
Yes.
Margaret Shepherd.
Yes.
Renee James.
Yes.
Edward Knutti.
Yes.
Motion approved, minutes approved.
Okay, no unfinished business. We'll move on to new business. Jeff Gaggen?
Yes, on tonight's agenda under new business, we have an application from the Ferber Company for Wawa Incorporated requesting site plan and special exception approval to develop a single-story, 6,119-square-foot Wawa convenience store building with eight onsite fuel pumps, the 16 fueling stations, 2.5 acres of commercial land located on the property known by PCN 5643423011002000, which is located at the southwest corner of West Blueham Boulevard and Garden Road intersection. Tonight we'll have a staff presentation, as well as Mr. Schmidt and others from the Wawa design team are present for actually a brief presentation and to answer questions as well. At this time, I'd like to ask DeAndre Spradley, our principal planner, to present the project to the board.
For the record, Ms. McCoy is now present.
No. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. DeAndre Spradley, principal planner. Just give you a project overview. The applicant is requesting a site plan approval to develop 2.50 acres of commercial land. They're wanting to build a single-story, 6,119-square-foot Wawa convenience store with eight onsite fuel pumps with 16 fueling stations. It's located on the southwest intersection of West Blueham Boulevard and Garden Road. Here is a general site location map of the property. Here's an aerial map showing the property in its existing condition. The adjacent property description and uses to the north, there is storage uses, and that is in unincorporated Palm Beach County. To the south, there are educational uses. That's where the Riviera Beach Purporture Academy is located. It has industrial future land use. To the east, there is utility uses with utilities, future land use. To the west is commercial uses, commercial, general, our general commercial future land use. And the subject parcel has a general commercial future land use. Staff analysis, this particular project is consistent with and compatible to the city's comprehensive plan and land development regulations. City services such as roads, water, sewer, and garbage collection are currently available to the site. Adequate parking has been proposed by the applicant. There were no objections from departmental staff, including police, fire, utilities, public works, and the building department. A typical Wawa store creates 30 to 40 jobs. The estimated current tax value of the property in the condition that it is right now is $2.1 million. The estimated tax value once Wawa is completed is estimated at $6.7 million. Because of the convenience, I'm sorry, because of the gas station portion of it, it is a special exception. And under this special exception analysis, ingress to and ingress from the property and the proposed structure that they're on, there is ingress and egress available directly off of West Blueham Boulevard and Garden Road. Additionally, there is a cross-access with the adjacent property to the west. Off-street parking and loading areas were required, including consideration of relevant factors in subsection 2A. The applicant did provide adequate 10-by-20 parking spaces. They also have decorative bowlers and landscaping around the perimeter of the building. Refuse and service areas include a consideration of relevant factors in subsections 2A and 2B. The applicant did propose a nine-foot-high basin area enclosure that has been proposed to hold two dumpsters for onsite garbage collection. Utilities include such considerations as hook-in locations and availability and compatibility of utilities for proposed use or structure. Utilities are currently available and active onsite. Screening, buffering, and landscaping. The applicant did provide adequate landscaping, preserving many of the onsite mature live oaks. Signs are outside displays. The applicant is proposing a monument sign along both West Blueham Boulevard and Garden Road. There is onsite instructional signs to show the entrance and exit, wall signs on the building facade, and a fuel pump canopy. Required yards and open spaces. The applicant did provide adequate yard and open space. Here's a color elevation of the proposed. This is the rear elevation as well as the left elevation. Here is the front elevation and the right elevation. This is what the gas pumping stations will look like. Here are elevations of the trash receptacle that's located in the rear of the property. Here is a overall site plan. In conclusion of my presentation, staff has recommended the board to consider approving the proposed site plan and special exception application with the following conditions. A two-year landscaping performance bond for 110% of the value of landscaping and irrigation shall be required before the certificate of occupancy is issued. Construction must be initiated within 18 months of the effective date of the adopted resolution in accordance with Section 31-60B of the City Code of Ordinances. Demolition, site preparation, or land clearing shall not be considered construction. Building permit application and associated plans and documents shall be submitted in its entirety and shall not be accepted by city staff in a partial or incomplete manner. All future advertising must state that the development is located in the city of Riviera Beach. Fees and penalties in accordance with City Code Section 31-554 will be levied against the property owner and/or business for violation of this condition. This development must receive final certificate of occupancy from the city for all buildings and units approved within five years of the approval of the adopting resolution, or the adopting resolution shall be considered null and void, requiring the applicant to resubmit application for site plan approval and re-initiate the site plan approval process. Once approved, the adopted resolution shall supersede any previous site plan approval resolutions associated with this property, causing previous site plan approval resolutions to be null and void. City Council authorizes city staff to approve future amendments to the site plan administratively so long as the site plan does not deviate greater than 5% from the originally approved submitted. At this time, I will take any questions from members of the board, and it's also important to note that the applicant is here, just in case he had any questions that I will not be able to answer.
Any questions for the board? Mr. Colton?
No, this time.
Ms. Shepherd?
Well, you have private police there or the city? How do they really fill up this project?
The police department had no objections to the site plan. I will have to defer to the applicant to see what would their arrangement with the police department.
Good evening, John Schmidt, major for the applicant. With me tonight, we have our civil engineer, our traffic engineer, our landscape architect, representatives from the contract firm, sure, the Ferber Group, as well as two real estate executives from Wawa, Mark Hamilton and Pia Wobatana. So they're here to also answer any questions that you may have. We believe that our application meets and exceeds the special exception standards. We're in agreement with the, all the conditions of approval. I'm going to address your security concerns as well. With your help, we'd like to move forward towards a March construction date, and it'll take about 160 days to build this. To outline a couple of the security items, I've got a slide here for you. But no, there's a, we don't have a guard per se on site, but there are considerable security measures that are done on the property. Number one, when you look at a lot of gas stations, they put advertisements all over the windows to advertise sales on beverages or things inside. The thing about Wawa is their glazing is completely clear. They're, they want you to be able to see inside at all times. So those, you can see through that glazing from all the streets all the time. Security cameras are inside and out of the property. There's a considerable engagement with the local authorities. We utilize height markers at the doorways. They discourage any panhandling and loitering. And, you know, if there's further questions about how they police their sites or self-police their sites, we've got a very good rapport with a few of the Florida counties. We've had a gentleman's presentation, Orange County Sheriff in Orlando. So I hope that answers your question.
What a, what a, Mr. Chair. What a height markers.
Height markers inside the doorway. When you, when you leave a, when you leave a Wawa or a lot of fueling stations, you'll see markers on the door, and it has a four-foot height, five-foot height, six-foot height. So when you're on the camera, they, it's easier to identify you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Are the cameras interfaced with the city of Riviera Beach?
No, they're not. No, we have our own closed-circuit television, our own closed-circuit monitoring.
Ms. James?
I just have one question. Number six is one of staff recommendation. City Council authorized the city staff to approve future amendments to the site plan administratively so long as the site plan is not deviate greater than 5% from the originally approved submitted. How did, how did that recommendation come about from the city council already?
Well, it's the reason why I wrote it that way because it is a ordinance that's proven in the special section, and we presented, we didn't want to hide anything from you. So it's like, whatever we're presenting tonight, that's the same to what we're going to be presenting to the city council.
If I may, for a point of clarification, Jeff Gaggen, Planning and Zoning Administrator. So these potential conditions of approval, they would appear in this manner on the final resolution that the city council approves. So as the planning zoning board, you're reviewing these conditions. However, on the final document, it would be the city council that is authorizing this development with the following conditions. So that's why it's written in this manner. So when, when the resolution goes to council, they would be authorizing condition number six, which allows us to have future amendments to the site plan so long as they don't deviate more than 5%.
Is it something, is something, man?
It is. It stemmed from the last development that was approved, the Emmerich Development. And the conditions, that was part of one of the conditions. And so we're using that as a template to approve all development, future developments in the city from that point on.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Velasquez, reflect that. Mr. Wiggum and Mr. Colton are on the dais in the record?
It's been noted.
Ms. McCoy?
Mr. Chair, just a real quick disclosure. I did, we, sorry, did have a conversation with the landscape, landscape architect briefly regarding this project. I do have one question, Mrs. Spradley, about the once-approved of the adoption of the resolution. This property is not being utilized now, right?
That is incorrect. It is utilized currently by the Palm Beach County. I, I, it's flipping my mind right now, but they're renting the top, I believe, the top portion of it, but they, their lease expires in February? In January. Health Department, the Palm Beach County Health Department. And they are vacating the building.
Okay, because I was curious about the, the adoption of the resolution should supersede any previous site plan approval resolutions associated with this property. But that would kind of suggest that, once it goes through the city council, then any use that currently already exists would no longer be allowed?
Um, no, that, that's not what that's saying. Basically, what that's saying is that if the applicant, based on this particular site plan, if they submit it, if they tried to do any changes to it in the future, they would basically have to default back to this resolution here.
Sure, but in the event that financing or whatever other catastrophic event that may prevent the actual project from going forward, then the previous site plan application, which is, I think it's two-story office building there?
That will still, any of the permitted uses that are there right now by right will still follow with that property. So if they wanted to do, you know, a commercial building there, it is some general commercial, and it has a commercial future land use. So any other categories that are located under the commercial general zoning will be able to apply to this particular property.
Okay, that's it for now, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Wiggum?
No, I'm here.
Ms. Barber?
Of course, Mr. Chair. You mentioned earlier that the cameras would not be synced with the city of Riviera Beach's cameras. Is that possible? And if it is, why wouldn't they be synced?
Good evening, Mark Hamilton, Wawa Corporation, 125 South State Route 7, Wellington, Florida. So we, we, we saw this comment come up, and we ran it through our, our security folks. It all has to do with the requirements we have to refine because of our payment system. If we have this interface with our security system, we would be violating a lot of the standards we've agreed to. So that was something we just, at this time, couldn't, couldn't agree to. Having your police department have control and access to our, our camera system.
Who's the agreement with? I must have missed that part.
With our, we, we have what are called PCI standards that our, the, our security team has to follow. And as part of that, we can't have folks outside of Wawa having access to the camera system.
So my, my question is, is there any agency outside of Wawa that prohibits you from allowing you to sync your cameras with a city, or in this case, the city of Riviera Beach's cameras?
I believe what we've, and what we've agreed to is, I think we're going to provide a couple calls onsite for, for the city to have cameras to be able to surveillance the site. And if there's something, you know, if something goes wrong and there is an investigation, obviously, we will cooperate with law enforcement, provide every footage or whatever that needs to be provided.
Right, but my question is, is there any agency outside of Wawa prohibiting Wawa from allowing its security cameras to be synced with the?
I'm not sure of an agency, but I know from what our security folks said, we would be violating certain standards. So that in itself, we couldn't, we couldn't have provided it.
Right, so where can we find those standards? What, what standard are you referring?
I'll have to go back to our security and get you whatever information you need.
Now, the security, is that a security force within Wawa? Does it fall under Wawa's umbrella? Or is that a private security company in and of itself?
Maybe part of it is under our umbrella.
Any other questions?
I have, I have one relative to the sign-off by various agencies within the city, but there's close proximity to the canal with that property. And I was wondering, we did not get any sign-off from South Florida Water Management. Was, is that, they don't, you know, what was the reason for that?
Quite honestly, I think that would be slightly unusual to get a sign-off from South Florida Water Management District as far as proximity to a water body or canal. If it was a larger project and there was a water management issue, oftentimes they have authority to provide permitting for that type of thing. But just the proximity of the tanks themselves and development itself to the canal, I don't think that warrants an additional approval.
Okay, but I'm not really saying approval, but they had no objection? Or were they notified?
I don't think they were notified in the process, other than just the public mail-out. So what I can say is the mail-out would have occurred, however, there wasn't a direct contact from a South Florida Water Management staff member that I'm aware of.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Chair, if I may, Mr. Brink would like to come up and address the security question.
Okay, just one second. Ms. Shepherd, you got a question?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to hear. Thank you.
All right, please.
I just wanted to clarify, with PCI compliant?
Could you identify yourself?
Damien Brink with John Schmidt and Associates, representing Wawa and the Ferber Company. With PCI compliant, when you're using credit card machines, you can't have an outside company or entity viewing those transactions. That's the reason why you have to enclose. So I just wanted to clarify. It's a federal party.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Shepherd?
He answered my question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I have a question.
Mr. Barber?
Is there a way that you could sync all the cameras except the ones that show the credit card transactions with the city of Riviera Beach?
Just to clarify too, it's all being recorded through a DVR system. So if the police needed to have access to it, it's available. It just can't be live monitored.
Mr. Barber?
That's it, as far as that's concerned. I also have a question regarding the companies surrounding the, the Wawa, the proposed Wawa construction. Have you gotten support from all of those entities? I believe it was a storage company, the school, and I can't remember what they all are, but have you gotten support from all of those places?
No. No, sir, we have not received that. We have not gotten any objections either. They were all notified through the various requirements of part of the application.
Other than that notification, have you spoke with any of these businesses or?
Yes, we have. I believe, with, with directly to our east enterprise, the Enterprise Runecar, that we share a access point with, we have met with them. So direct, that's where it says site location, our, I'm sorry, our western property line, just to our, just to our west. So Garden Road, I'm sorry, was to the east, just directly adjacent to our west with a shoreline. This is Enterprise Runecar. We're sharing that access point on Blueham, and we have been over to talk about the development. We have a shared access drive and access easement through this area.
And to this point, they haven't given their support?
The district area has met with them, and they support the project.
And what's that white building behind?
Right here.
Not that one. If you continue west, continue west.
This one?
West, right there. Is that the hotel?
No, the hotel is right here. You can see kind of the pool right here, the travel lodge. There's an access point directly right here.
Right, and next to the hotel is what?
Gas station.
The lumberyard.
Oh, okay. Oh, and the school, did you all speak with the, the purportory school?
No, we did not. The school's right here.
Mr. Colton?
My concern is the, the close proximity to the water supply or the waterway. Has there been any provision for emergency spill, if there's an emergency spill, to protect the waterway?
Let me see if I can get Wawa or George, our civil engineer, to discuss that.
Old Engineering, George Valban, 2255 Glazer Road, Boca Raton. Just to verify, your question is in regards to spill over from the canal?
If, if there's an emergency spill, if there's a spill at the gas station?
Sure.
What emergency provisions have been put in place to protect that waterway from gasoline going into the waterway?
We have emergency stops right in front of the store. In addition, the majority of the site is concrete, so that encloses, it doesn't, it doesn't allow, I guess, the concrete. I guess, the concrete vapors and as well as the contamination to spread further.
But does concrete stop gasoline from seeping through the concrete? What would stop gasoline? And concrete alone, because concrete is porous. What would stop gasoline from going through?
Just the short distance. The tanks itself are double-wall fiberglass and it's to the utmost environmental standards. So something like that happening would be very minimal.
Second question to that, has, does Wawa have a gasoline station that is that close proximity to a waterway?
Yeah, we build 80 stores already in the state, and I'm sure we've had a lot of them that are near the ponds, the canals, the lakes. Wawa itself, we have a very strong...
Specifically, do you have any? I know you may have built, and you're in northern Florida.
We're in central Florida, we're in Tampa, we're in Fort Myers. We deal with high groundwater and where we're putting tanks in with, you know, three, four feet of groundwater. So yes, we have encountered this.
Where specifically have you encountered this?
I can get you a list of sites, but you know, if in Florida, you're probably gonna build next to a canal. But if you want, I can, we can find you some sites and send you where we've dealt with this before.
Because this is my concern as far as waterway and gas, if there is a spill.
And we have a very strong emergency system, we have containment wells, we have emergency shut-offs. Everything is controlled. If there is something, the system is shut down immediately. A lot of the systems where George mentioned is designed so that if there is a leak or if there's a break or anything, it is caught immediately. And the site is shut down, and we get people in to see what's happening and how can we fix it. So we are very scared of the yard in our fuel system, in our monitoring, in our whole program.
Have you had any such spill that we're talking about?
Not that I know of, not that I know of.
Give you example.
Okay, so we got a store in Largo? Oh, yeah, okay, here it is. Yeah, we have a store in Largo, Florida, just showed me an aerial where we built right next to, it looks like, a large body of water.
How long have you been in Largo?
When did that store begin? Three years, two years ago? Thank you.
I just have two questions. On the elevation, you marked in north, south, I'm sorry, front, right, left. I'm assuming that the front elevation is the one facing north to Blue Heron Boulevard, is that correct?
This here will be the front, that is facing Blue Heron Boulevard.
Okay, all right. Second question is, on the cross-access to property next door in Enterprise, is that a, an agreement between the two property owners, or is it an actual easement?
It's an actual recorded easement.
It is, okay, thank you.
It's in place today.
Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Shepherd?
Just one. I have visited one of the Wawas, and it talked about the outdoor covering of the chairs. Will that be here in Riviera Beach?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, with all that's going on, you don't think it would, it will infringe on your next-door neighbors? Because it's very busy from what I remember in Pennsylvania.
The chairs are located along Blue Heron Boulevard and Garden Road. The chairs, the outside seating areas are, there's a few that front Blue Heron Boulevard, and then the majority of them front Garden Road, right there.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
How many do you propose on that site?
There's seven tables and two to four chairs at each table.
Your handicap parking, how much parking did you allow for the handicapped? Would be the bands with the handicap, little chairs, and what?
We're actually overparked on the site by about 14 spaces. And if you look, there's two directly in front of the front doors located here with the handicap accessible space between them, as well as an additional space in the back. If you were just coming for, potentially just coming for your sandwich, and there's an ADA accessible space this way, and again, then two in the front.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions on the board?
I have some questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Warrber.
What type of environmental hazards are associated with the operation or construction?
With the construction and operation?
And/or, yes. So are there any environmental hazardous threats that this type of operation may create?
Probably the highest environmental threat is the fuel itself. Again, the fuel is contained in double-wall, double-wall containments. Those all have monitors in them to make sure there is no leakage through there. The individual pumps have shut-offs, so somebody, for instance, this has happened before, where they leave the pump in their car and then kind of drive away, and you think you get like a free flow of fuel everywhere. There's automatic shut-offs that doesn't allow that much fuel to come out at once before it gets shut off.
And for the surrounding businesses, is there any environmental hazards or threats that they should possibly be concerned about?
Not that I see with any other commercial development.
Mr. Warrber, you there? Okay, Mr. Coleman, go ahead.
Two questions. One, who is your major competitor? And two, why did you choose this site in Riviera Beach?
I can tell you why it was, the site was chosen because of the proximity to 95. Was one of the main reasons. In terms of competitors, I'd have to ask Mark to see who your competitors were. I think he's gonna say that there are none, but I mean, really, the quality of the food that they provide here is really, they're more of a food-based and just happen to have the gasoline.
Okay, when you said there is none, then why not?
He said, he said it, great. If you're thinking for the fuel side, I'll probably say, you know, if it's racetrack or Cumberland Farms or someone like that. But like he said, because of our unique culture, our unique how the company has grown, it started as a food market first. It was never a gas station or a convenience store, it was always a food market. And about 20 years ago, our customers said, you know, we love you so much, you should think about adding fuel. And then we got into the fuel business. So, you know, it's one of those where, yes, we do sell gas, but we're not the typical gas station. So, you know, we don't, racetrack, Cumberland, they can't compare to us with our food offering. It's fresh, made-to-order, on-site. It's not something sitting in a, you know, sitting in a back room or sitting stored for a week or whatever. So competition-wise on the food end, I don't think there's anyone that compares to us. But on the fuel side, you know, we probably, and we're not big into gas, we're racetrackers, 28, 28 pumps, and the most we may do is 16, because it's just a convenience for our guests.
Thank you.
Chair, I just would like, since they have the rendering up to go through where the signs are located advertising Wawa.
It's actually the... There's one here, where the red is here.
So is that a flat sign to the ground, or is that going to be a high-rise sign?
That will be a monument sign. And because it is on the principal arterial, it's restricted to 42 square feet. So basically, a seven-foot-high by six-foot-wide sign.
Is that just gonna advertise the company name and the gas prices, or...?
That is correct. There is one right here. You have like a enter here sign here, like enter, exit here. And I believe there's an entrance sign here. No, I apologize, there is no entrance sign here. But there is a directional sign, either on this side or on this side here.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question. Somewhere in the documents, I read that your pricing in terms of fuel is usually competitive, very competitive for a couple particular reasons. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So would you say that generally, wherever Wawa's located, you are the price leader?
I would say that we're very competitive.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have one question. He mentioned the trucks coming off of 95. Where are they gonna dock at? I mean, getting in, that's a very busy street.
We don't have, this isn't a place for fueling semi-trucks. The only truck that would be coming here would be to drop fuel. So this isn't, this isn't designed for a truck stop. This is purely passenger vehicles.
And the food that's coming in on the trucks?
There certainly will be deliveries. There is a loading zone along the whole western side of the building here. All on that strike area, there's no parking. So when deliveries do come, they'll be parking right here, loading inside of the building.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. Coleman?
I was gonna put a motion on the floor, but...
Okay, no other comments, we'll look for a motion?
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Okay, can we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Coleman Rollins and the last one?
Cedric Barbe the second?
Yes.
So is it to make an approval with conditions as provided?
Yes, move to approve with conditions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, can we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, Coleman Roll?
Cedric Barbe the second?
Yes.
Try to take McCohey?
Yes.
Margaret Shepherd?
Yes.
Julius Wiegand?
Yeah.
Brian Colton?
Yes.
Ryan James?
Yes.
Edward Cooney?
Yes.
Anyone's voting, motion approved?
Well, welcome to Riviera Beach, and we look forward to seeing you build out there.
We're excited to get moving, thank you, thanks for your support.
Thanks for bringing Riviera. Okay, we have two, item B.
Item B, under new business, is ordinance of the city council of Riviera Beach, Palm County, Florida, amending chapter 28 of the city's code ordinances entitled Signs, section 28-1 definition, section 28-5 prohibited signs, section 28-125 programmable digital signs in chapter 31 of the city's code ordinances entitled Supplemental District Regulations, section 31-551, in order to create standards for installation and use of digital fuel price signage on property with self-service fuel pumps. And this actually ties directly into the comments from Board members previously. This signage that is proposed, is proposed to have a digital function. So what this would do is allow for that to occur. Currently, our sign code does not allow for it to occur. So I'll have Deandre, the principal planner, present the ordinance at this time.
Okay, as Jeff mentioned, the advocate Wawa requested a text amendment to the code ordinances to allow digital fuel price signs in the city. Currently, the code ordinances prohibit the use of animated signs except for digital billboards and programmable digital signs, which are only permitted in the community facility zoning district. Staff has prepared language to incorporate digital signs into the code ordinances. Staff is proposing for fuel price digital signs to be permitted at a self-service fuel station in the city. It must be part of an onsite monument sign. And these signs are restricted to 42 square feet on the principal arterials. And principal arterials basically means West Blue Heron Boulevard, Military, MLK, the principal roads in the city. The sign will only utilize 50% of the allowable sign area to display the fuel prices. The numbers are restricted to a height of 16 inches. The display color of the numbers are restricted to a color of white. The brightness of the sign must conform to the predetermined ambient lighting settings that will not impact drivers in a harmful manner. The sign must have a default mechanism to turn off or blackout in event of a malfunction. Here is an example of a digital fuel price sign that we are including in the proposed text amendment. Staff is recommending the board to consider approving the ordinance, which amends the city code ordinances to permit digital fuel price signs at self-service fuel stations in the city. At this time, I will take any questions from the board.
Mr. Coleman?
Just a general question. Text change amendment for our code, is that a separate application, or is this done on...
That is. That was a, initially, what happened is that when they first admitted the site plan application, one of our comments from the planning and design department was to let them know that, hey, digital signs aren't allowed in the city. And therefore, that's what triggered the application to do a text amendment to the code ordinances.
So the entire code is gonna be amended, not just specific for this location? Because I thought I read you say it's principal locations?
Yes, I provided... In the staff report, I provided the proposed ordinance. And within that ordinance, certain sections of the code ordinances will be updated in order to allow the digital signs. So it's not, it's not being updated in its entirety, only certain sections are being updated.
That's it for now, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So the sections being updated are general, commercial, CG, and downtown core, is that correct?
Now, this is actually, what we're updating is actually located inside the chapter 28 section of the code. If you look on where it says on page two of the ordinance...
I don't know where that is. But I'm just looking at the bottom of D, it says, "Proposed text amendment will apply to all convenience stores and fuel pumps, which are currently only permitted in the CG and DC zoning district." So I'm assuming that's where you're gonna update it.
Well, the, currently, right now, the way that the code is written is that fueling stations are only allowed at those particular locations in the city. Like, they're not allowed in residential areas, they're not allowed in, um, industrial areas, they're only allowed with zoning that has that particular zoning.
I understand, so, so the logic is that that's where you're gonna change the?
Correct, that is correct.
All right, okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, could you indulge me for one minute? Are the new signs coming into Riviera Beach? Did I hear they're gonna be digital?
They, I do know that the one right in front of City Hall here is. Um, right shortly before you came on board, this board did go through and, um, pretty much, I'm not, I don't even remember if you were on board or not, but, um, this board, as well as city council, did approve for programmable digital signs to be allowed in the city. And, um, some of the new signs, um, I do know there is one gonna be at City Hall, but I'm not sure where the other locations are gonna be at. That's gonna be continued upon the funding.
Because my mind, if it's serving right, I think they approved one coming off of Ninety-Five, but you said with the approval with funding, is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Gold, any questions?
Couple of questions. One, what's the timeframe? And two, why just limit, uh, certain specific area? Why not just do it for the entire city?
Well, we're restricting it to only for convenience stores, um, for just to display digital fuel price signs. And to answer your second, your first question, timeframe, um, this would be, uh, they will go parallel with the site plan application, which is continued upon, um, approval from city council.
When I say timeframe, you have not just Wawa that's asking for this digital or ask why? Is this digital specifically was required or asked by Wawa? Now, there are other gas stations that do not have digital.
Right, and they will have the opportunity once, um, you know, if the board does decide to approve it and then the city council decides to approve it, those other gas stations will now have that opportunity to convert their monument signs to electric signs.
What would be the timeframe? Is there a timeframe set on that?
The moment that the ordinance is approved on second reading, the store owner will be able to go and apply for a sign permit that would, you know, that next day or something.
Would that be a requirement to do?
For?
The digital switch from?
No, no, that won't be a requirement. It will just be, um, basically all they would do is just apply for a building permit to get a digital sign.
But the city won't require them to get a digital sign?
No, 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 that's not a requirement. This is totally optional.
Then why not throughout the city with a digital sign?
This is. At any location where a gas station is allowed, uh, they will be able to do a digital sign.
Any other questions?
Chair.
Yes.
I just have a, a question. Um, I know in some other cities, there is some kind, you know, different, um, talk about the prices that the gas stations display. Um, their, their cash price versus their, um, their credit card price is usually different, different. And I know in some cities, um, that was concerned about false advertising and getting people, um, to go to that business. So I know that doesn't make a difference here, but I'm kinda wondering, since, you know, they're gonna be a new enterprise to our city, how, what prices are they going to be displaying on their signs? Do they differentiate that, their cash price from the credit price? Because usually with some companies, credit is more.
Um, this is the, we, we use their sign as a template, but they're just proposing regular diesel and ethanol-free. I would have to defer to the applicants to see if they're going to possibly incorporate cash versus credit prices.
Yeah, I'm just curious about that with the advertising.
For Wawa, I can't speak for other gas stations, for Wawa, the gas and credit price are the same.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
I have a question about the monument sign. Are we saying here that we're allowing them a forty-two-square-foot monument sign and that the, uh, the applicant or the, or the company has to make a decision of whether they identify their business or put up gas prices?
Well, that's, that's one of the reasons why we restricted it to, they only can use fifty percent of the actual monument sign for displaying fuel prices. Um, and again, this is totally optional. I mean, if Wawa really wanted, um, you know, they could, they could have removed the digital portion of it, um, but that's part of the national branding. And, um, let's say a future, uh, you know, someone that comes in in the future and do a sign. If they wanted to do, um, you know, they won't be able to do the entire sign with, just like their logo. I mean, uh, they would have to do fifty percent digital and the other fifty percent their logo and whatever else may, they may incorporate on that.
I understand that, but, I mean, one of the, you know, one of the basic marketing tools is to identify your brand to the world as they drive by to go into this business. And on this example, uh, Wawa is a horizontal logo and, uh, it doesn't make sense to have a horizontal logo running vertically. I'm just saying, it seems inherently unfair to say you got forty-two feet to identify your business. Now suddenly, we're gonna say, if you wanna advertise pricing too, you gotta almost stop advertising your business. So, and again, this is a question, it just seems inherently unfair. The sign ordinance, monument sign ordinance was forty-two square feet so you could identify your business, okay? You know, the XYZ company. Now we're saying if you wanna do digital, uh, you gotta not advert, essentially, almost not advertise or fifty percent decrease in your advertising. It seems to me we could find a more creative way to implement the digital portion of this for gas stations that allows them to identify their business and still promote, you know, the specific product pricing.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna let Jeff answer in a moment, but just, just looking at this, this example here, let's say for example that they put the Wawa sign right in the middle of the sign, you know, pretty large. There, there's nothing restricting them to say that they can't put the regular sign up top, the diesel on the other corner and the ethanol at the bottom, you know, put the logo in the very middle. Uh, so there's nothing restricting them. It's basically, that's, this is just a general concept that they came up with. And I'll let Jeff, you want to say a few words?
So currently on Blue Heron Boulevard, the signs limitations provide for a monument type sign of this dimension. So this is allowing additional flexibility if the company feels as if marketing in this manner is, is more beneficial to have the fuel price than the options there. And as Mr. Sprath was saying, if the layout of the digital portion were to be changed, that's also allowed. So let's say if you wanted your, your logo in, you know, the top center portion, um, you could do that and then have the fuel price on the bottom or inverse, so there is some flexibility. Um, additionally, our sign code as far as wall signage is pretty liberal, so it often grants businesses the opportunity to have rather large signage on the building itself. So we don't, the intent isn't to limit their options, it's really to, to provide additional options. And even some of the directional signage has some of the Wawa logo components on there to identify that you've arrived at, at the Wawa site, so.
So if I hear what you just said, if I wanted to put the digital, the digital pricing sign on the building, that would be allowable?
No, no.
No, okay. So you didn't say that.
No, that wasn't, wasn't my intent if I did.
But, you know, if you drive around and look at, uh, other self-service gas stations, okay, uh, they identify their business and they also have pole signs with pricing on it, okay, in various parts of the business. So, uh, this almost seems to me to put them at a disadvantage if you're on an interior, uh, on a, on a main road, because now I've got to shrink Wawa and in effect, almost shrink or put Wawa in the less favorable position on the bottom and the pricing on the top. So, my only point is, I just wonder if there's a more creative way to allow them to identify their business and give them an avenue to present the pricing.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Coming back to Ninety-Five, there's a Chevron station there with the big sign that oval of I-95. Will Wawa be able to put a sign of that magnitude to alert, um, the people coming from I-95?
No, they will not be able to put a sign at Bart. Um, they can, because it is on the principal arterial, the maximum square footage far as a monument sign, um, as well as a pole sign is forty-two square feet.
Some of the locations along, um, the I-95 and Blue Heron Boulevard interchange, there's a specific section of our sign code, and I believe they're referred to as a point-of-purchase sign in the sign code, where it allows for a larger sign, a taller sign that's visible from the on and off ramp to be present. So, um, a lot of those businesses did take advantage of that, so there's a few of the auto dealers that have larger signs, uh, I believe there's a gas station that has a larger sign, even hotel that's nearby has a larger sign. But I believe once you get past, I wanna say three-hundred or five-hundred feet from that intersection, then you're no longer allowed to have that larger pole-type sign.
Mr. Chair. But on, I guess I-95 or whatever, they will be able to put a sign like on, I think, I-95 that tell the different stores in that particular neighborhood? Will they be able to do that?
If it's available, uh, they said that they will be able to do it, but a lot of times the space is already occupied, who knows?
Well, how would people know you're there? Uh, just a question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Gold.
Me personally, I think we, when I first came on the board, we had some discussion about the development of downtown and signage. Me personally, I would like signage throughout the city of Riviera Beach to be more like this, where it's more in with the vegetation or not high signs, something more with the uniqueness or make Riviera Beach more unique.
I will say, um, to, you know, to piggyback off of that, um, staff is currently revising the, the land development regulations to incorporate new signage as you're referencing. And that's probably gonna be coming down, um, later on down the pipeline, but in the near future.
Will that also revisit this? What?
No, because this, um, that there is more of a, um, more related to the CRA area.
Okay. One question on, uh, section twenty-eight dash five, the prohibited signs. If I remember correctly, a lot of these are, are in our current sign code, correct?
That's correct. If it's underlined, that means that we are adding it. Um, and if it's not underlined, that means that the code is currently existing.
Okay, because I don't see anything underlined in my county.
Yeah, if you keep going.
Number eleven, okay, and fuel price signs, okay. Missed that. Now, this does include the handheld signs? That people are sitting out there with handheld signs to buy the electronic cigarettes?
No, 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 this is, this does not include that.
Okay. How do we get that included? Can you get it included?
That's actually an entirely different, uh, item amongst itself, but there's been attempts at regulating that throughout the county and I'm guessing the state and even beyond that. However, it's been proven, uh, rather difficult and I think labor intends to it just because it's on a person and it's mobile and difficult to really enforce.
Okay, okay. No other questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. McCoyle moves to approve.
Second.
Colton seconds, call the roll.
Cedric Barber, the second.
Yes.
Tryade McCoyle.
Yes.
Margaret Shepherd.
Yes.
Julius Wiegand.
Yeah.
Brian Colton.
Yes.
Renee James.
Yes.
Edward Canoe.
Yes.
Any one's voting, motion approved?
Thank you, board.
Thank you for your support, we really appreciate it. We look forward to redeveloping that.
Thank you. All right, general discussion. Uh, we have one public comment card. Mr. Wes Blackman.
Good evening, chairman, board. My name is Wes Blackman, I'm certified urban planner, and I'm representing Michael Mohny of D's T-shirts at Twenty-One Twenty Broadway. The zoning district is the downtown core and it's the east side of Broadway between East Twenty-Second and East Twenty-First Street. And this is regarding the administrative approval of the boathouse development project that's now underway, under construction. I reviewed email correspondence between Mr. Mohny, uh, the planning and zoning staff, city manager and community development director from July and October of this year. And I reviewed the plans submitted in April of this year. Sheet T-one indicates that the occupancy is classified per the Florida Building Code as low-hazard storage group two. And I'd like to point out that that does not include the dry storage of boats. Medium hazard group storage one allows for dry storage of boats. So, uh, being that this is the boathouse property, one would question, um, the designation for, for that particular occupancy. Plans indicate that there are four thousand nine hundred ninety-eight square feet of building, including three hundred square feet of office, and the exact use is unclear in the email correspondence. Also, plans show wall-mounted louvers and a fan. This was administratively approved and no notification, uh, was made to the property owner. The downtown core zoning allows for administrative review and the email communications confirm that, along with section thirty-one dash five thirty-four E-one-A of the LDRs. However, section thirty-one five twenty-four two A does allow for, quote, "Any application deemed by the community development director to have a significant impact to surrounding properties shall be reviewed by the planning and zoning board, CRA board, and approved by the city council." Twenty-One Twenty Broadway, D's T's, is surrounded on three sides by properties owned by Riviera Broadway Properties LLC, also known as the Boathouse. There will be a twenty-foot-high wall alongside the south side of my client's property. He is concerned about fumes and smoke from any operations there and feels as if his property, quote, "is being closed in a box," unquote. There is no doubt that this project would have a significant impact to the property located at Twenty-One Twenty Broadway. It is, can I continue?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. It is being built immediately adjacent to the southern wall of the building which houses D's T-shirts, Twenty-One Twenty Broadway, and therefore should have been subject to a public site plan review process by the proper boards. Materials reviewed would have included the clear identification of the proposed use of the property, location and dimensions of its of the property, location and dimensions of existing and proposed easements. An access easement through the surrounding property from twenty-one twenty Broadway to and from has been an issue that went through the courts about seven or eight years ago. There are bay doors as part of this new building that could make worse already identified access issues. Parking requirements are another concern. Putting this out so that the board is aware of the situation, that's why I'm there tonight, and I'll leave you with these questions and perhaps staff can answer them. Other than having significant impact to surrounding properties, what else would trigger a review through the Planning and Zoning Board, CRA and the City Council? Does it matter about the size of the development project itself? How would the change of use trigger a public review? And when would this rise to the level of the special exception use? Thank you for the opportunity to bring this to your attention and enter this information into the record.
Thank you. Staff like to comment?
Jeff Gaggen, Planning and Zoning Administrator. At this time, I'm unprepared to comment on any of the questions that wasn't provided, the questions in advance of the meeting. I will provide my contact info to Mr. Blackman before the meeting is done. But, staff has been in communication with Mr. Mahoney and we'll keep that dialogue open.
Okay. So, possibly at our next meeting, you'll give us an update?
Yeah, we will probably just do a response memo and provide that to the board or to Mr. Mahoney or anyone else that desires to review that.
Okay.
Any comments from the board? Chair.
Mr. Colton.
Two questions. You started off by saying you reviewed emails. Now, by reviewing emails, does emails constitute a breaking of the ordinance or code? And two, as did, I'm assuming, the attorney? If there are concerns, why wouldn't you bring concerns or solutions or show where the solutions or the city is going against certain codes at this presentation? Those two things.
Well, the email information is a public record and, you know, the public is available, that is available to the public as a matter of state of Florida law. And the email correspondence that I reviewed only affirmed that the decision to review the application administratively was a correct one and outlined the general parameters of the project, but it was not all-inclusive and left out some important information, in my opinion. Any other question?
If there's information, as you said, that were left out and/or infractions on this particular property, why wouldn't you bring solutions or bring to this board what infractions are there and the solutions, in your opinion, that would correct those infractions at this particular meeting?
Okay. I appreciate that. I was just brought on, construction just began, and soon after that, my phone rang from Mr. Mahoney, and he wanted me to look into the matter. And I have not had an opportunity to talk to staff, and I imagine that we could come to some conclusions or solutions based upon that meeting, but I just wanted to get the information out for the record this evening and share that, the situation with you as it's going on today.
Just to follow up. Now, I understand that you've just gotten the phone call, but at what particular point will this come in front of the board for the board to review if the board doesn't have information ahead of time to say, okay, this is what the board needs to consider? That what is being done is being done incorrectly? And to bring it to say, okay, it's gonna maybe come up at some point without any certain solutions right now for the board to consider over a period of two weeks, three weeks, a month? Why wouldn't you do that?
Well, for this particular situation, the cow might be out of the barn already, and there may not be a lot the board or the city can do because the permit has been issued. I'm just making you aware of this because I'm sure it's an instance that could reoccur in the city, and you should be aware that there are decisions being made administratively that should, in my opinion, come before the Planning and Zoning Board and Public Board, rather than approved administratively. This is just one example, so.
And?
Going forward, I think it's useful.
I, I, I appreciate that, but bringing it in front of the board without a solution or some type of, this is the solution for a situation like that? If it does happen again, would be prudent for the board to consider?
Yes.
Coming as an attorney from you to say, okay, it may come up again? And is this something that the board should consider?
Right. I don't want to represent myself as an attorney. I'm an urban planner, a certified urban planner, EICD.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But, you know, that's my expertise, but I would like to meet with staff and investigate the circumstances some more, maybe we can come up with some solutions going forward. I'm not sure there's a remedy in this case, other than to be aware that this particular property, twenty-one twenty Broadway, is surrounded by a property that is undergoing redevelopment at this time.
Thank you. Any other spot?
Mr. Chair, just out of comment. Thank you for coming out and voicing Mr. Mahoney's concerns, because normally, he is a frequent city resident that does appear to these meetings to voice his concerns, and that's what this forum is certainly for. So, you can let him know that, you know, if he was not able to be here, we do appreciate him sending a representative with his concerns, because that's what we're here to do, is to listen to our citizens, so.
I'll let him know that.
Mr. Chair. Sure. Two, you said Mr. Black?
Blackman.
Blackman. The other day, coming home, I do live on that side that Mahoney's shop is, and when I saw the construction and the way it was, my heart did sink for the Mahoneys. I wish you would convey that to them.
I sure will.
I'm sorry it's come to this, but I think now it's a legal issue that we should really be discussing, you know? I think it's, it has to go through the city. But, I do, I do, I want the Mahoneys to know that I was really taken aback when I saw that the other morning. The dust was everywhere, I think it should have been a net. I, just coming out of the street, it was just deplorable that morning, and I was very saddened that they have to breathe that stuff in. So, that part, you know, I do want to convey to them. And I thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Any other board comments?
Mr. Chair.
McCoy.
Actually, I got two string of comments. I guess rebuttal question and then also a comment in general, so I'll ask Mr. Blackman. The address where, you said it's construction? Or is it demolition? Because?
Well, right now, it's demolition, leading to construction or having plans approved for almost five thousand square feet of storage space.
So, it's in demolition phase, but you said that there was no clear identification of its proposed use?
There was some of the plans, and it was storage category two, which is low-risk storage, which does not allow the dry storage of boats, which I find ironic since it is the boathouse and it would be a storage facility.
And what's the address there, Mr. Blackman?
Twenty-one hundred.
So, the demolition is occurring at twenty-one hundred?
I believe so.
And you said the use on the permit is storage category two?
Yes. And that's through the Florida Building Code, it's the occupational, it's the occupation standard title for that sort of classification.
And just so I'm clear, the proposed new use is storage category two?
Yes, that's what appears on the plans, and that is considered low-risk storage.
And I hate to sound like I'm being redundant, but you mean, post-demolition, the use is going to be storage, not the use that was demolished, but the new use?
Right. If the former use was retail, it is different from retail.
Exactly what I was getting at. So, the former use was retail, but now is storage? And there was?
That would prohibit the dry storage of boats.
Okay, but there's no site plans, is what you're saying?
There was a site plan. There was a complete set of plans that was reviewed and approved administratively.
Oh, administrative?
Yes.
Okay. That's it for Mr. Blackman.
Okay.
But I do have a question for Jeff.
Go ahead. On the same subject.
I do have a question.
Same subject.
On the same subject. So, Mr. Gaggen, and I certainly don't want you to respond off the cuff, but generally speaking, and not so much to this project, but when there's a change in use and, you know, I don't want to get too into the specifics of this actual project that he's speaking of, at what point, because I know Ms. James pointed out the five percent change would have to come back before staff or administrative review, but at what point do you change the use through demolition and then new construction, does it not become a whole new cycling application that has to go through the review process?
I think at this point, I'm just unprepared to answer any of the comments stemming from this, being that it's difficult to ask just a general question, being that it's framed in this, in this context right now. What I can say is there are existing code requirements, and the code does allow for administrative approval of certain uses. I'd be happy to provide that information to the board, but it's difficult to just answer in generalities once it's already been framed in this context.
Sure, sure, and I respect that.
Yeah, I understand.
I would ask though, I do recall our code speaking of us being allowed to visit these sites. Is there a way that we can, well, not we, but staff can develop some sort of process or maybe even a procedure that way, in the event that we want to visit these locations, that there is no confusion? Because, you know, I certainly did get a call from Mr. Mahoney about it, but I'm a little apprehensive walking onto a site just willy-nilly out of the blue and saying, well, planning and zoning board member, you know, what's going on here? Because I'm not unfortunate, but is there a way that we can kind of figure out a way that that can be better facilitated? Because?
I would say if it was, if it was a project that the board is actively involved with, then I think it would be easier versus just construction on private property that the board isn't involved with, which is the case currently that we're basically discussing. So, for example, you'd be asking a private property owner to allow you in an active construction area or demolition area. So, it would just be an additional?
Right, but Mr. Gaggen, that is the whole case in point, because you're saying that the board is not included on this. And according to Mr. Blackman, he's saying that the board should be included, as well as the CRA and the city. And I want to get into that in particular, but I was out in the neighborhood just yesterday, and I noticed that I was talking to some neighbors on Thirty First Street and Avenue West about this park that I don't even, you know, that's, I actually defer that portion to later in my comments, but at what point do, are we allowed to exercise our right in visiting these properties, whether it came to the board, I mean, or whether it was done administratively? I don't think there should be a difference between the two, because just for, I guess, transparency, I think that's something that we still should be allowed and?
I don't want to say that you're not allowed to do that, I'm just saying that it becomes a conversation with a private property owner and a construction company, whether or not they want to have an additional person, you know, a resident onsite. I think in this case that the existing property owner would more than likely be happy to arrange a time if you'd like to go onsite, but, you know, it could be case by case as far as, you know, again, having private property under construction and having a board member or resident being onsite.
So, would you suggest that that language in the code is obsolete?
What I can say is that I don't know of it occurring on a regular basis.
Sure, and that's, you know, I think that's something that we should perhaps exercise a little more, just because we haven't been, and then you got a speaker that comes up and, that's it, Mr. Chair, for Mr. Blackman's response.
Okay. All right. Any other board comments on the subject?
Chair.
Mr. Colton.
Just to piggyback, and I think Mr. Swigum, correct me if I'm wrong, had mentioned this a few meetings back about going on site, and he brought up some type of T-shirt identifying that you are a member of the Planning and Zoning Board. That could be returned, that could be something that the city implement, or a card such as realtors who have cards for a period of a year would say, I'm a city planning and zoning board, and courtesy from the planning and zoning board member would call that property manager or property owner and say, okay, I'd like to be on site. And that's something that would have to be a requirement to turn back into the city to give to the next planning and zoning board member that's come on. But, yes, it's in the code that planning and zoning board members have obligation or a right to go on to sites who may or may not be discussed at a planning and zoning board meeting, that have that, I would say, right in quotation, to go on to sites that are being developed. That's something that could be implemented to, you know, I would put in place.
I think, I think there's a fine line, but there is a difference between having a legal right to enter a property and working in conjunction with a property owner. For example, I don't have a legal right to just walk on private property, so the building official may, or other certain staff members may, due to, you know, public safety or other concerns of that nature, but even I don't have the right, as a city staff member, just to go on someone's property, even if there is a project pending necessarily, so.
But, the code just say, that says that, and I'm not reading correctly, but I know I read it, that the code says that a planning and zoning board member can, and I'm wording it correctly, go on site of any, of a particular project that's coming up. However, it's written. So, how is that to play out if a board member would like to say, I want to investigate a little bit more and go on site?
I would suggest that if any board member does, then just contact city staff, and I can reach out to the property owner or developer applicant, and I'm sure it can be arranged. But, I wouldn't suggest just walking onto private property, whether it's pending development or not.
Mr. Gaggen.
I mean, I don't think we're asking for your permission. The permission was established in the, in the code of ordinance. My question is?
I don't know if it's a need for finding, but?
And I think, Mr. Colton, well, so you're saying it's obsolete?
I'm not saying it's obsolete, I'm just saying that just because a code is passed fifty years ago, there may have been other laws that have superseded since that point. I don't know, I haven't researched it, I'm not.
But, my question, what I was curious, is there a way that we can have staff to facilitate this? Whether it be through the card idea that he recommended, whether it be through a next court by a building official, but, I mean, I'm not asking you, or I don't believe Mr. Colton was asking you, are we allowed? Because the code is clear. But, you're saying that there's property rights. Obviously, there's property rights, but there's also a right for neighbors or community people to know what's going on in their neighborhood. I mean, I got a park that's been closed for nearly two years on my street, and I've seen absolutely nothing. We seen that project on Cunningham Park, it has to be closed for two years. We were approaching Christmas, and the only thing that's happened was they chained off the fence, and I'm looking at these kids who are getting in all kind of trouble because they have no access to a park, and the only thing I've seen happen was trees, palm trees that was, I guess, relocated from the marina over to Cunningham Park, that's actually went dead. And I mean, like, what's the use there? dead, and I mean, like, what's the use there? And what's the purpose? If we're not even gonna begin construction on that, then let's just open it back up because it's just like, I, I see things that just don't make a lot of sense, and it might be from a different perspective because I live on West Thirty First Street, maybe, what, what street is it, you live on twenty? Okay, but I live in the community, is what I'm saying, so to be, to.
Is that the only thing you're trying to say?
No, Mr. Quaid, Mr. Quaid, let's, let's finish up this one topic. We go to public, to board comments, and if you'd like to bring that up, okay? But let's a board attorney make a comment on.
Just quickly, and I have not looked at the section of the code that you all are referring to, I mean, there might be, a lot of times when the code has language in there that a board member may go on the property that's under the kind of quasi-judicials context, context where the board member is allowed to do that. As far as general authority under, under law for someone to go onto private property, you know, if, if a person pulls a building permit, normally when they sign off and, and agree to that permit, they're agreeing to allow the building official or a building inspector to go onto their private property under those conditions to, to do the appropriate inspections, or if there's a, a health, safety, public welfare type of thing, under the building code, you know, a building inspector or a building official would have the right to go on the property. Otherwise, you know, code enforcement officers do not have the right to go on private property. I'm not aware of any other officer or any other employees of, of any municipality or county that would be allowed to do that unless it's, you know, police fire under the same public health, safety guidelines. So I, I don't know if, if we even attempted to try to put something like that in a code that that would be legally binding or, or agree would allow us to do that, and that's, that's just my general comment on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeff, let's, let's end this with, you'll take a look at the comments that were made, and your response will be, I think you said a memo on it to address the issues?
Yes, I can either, I can wait until the minutes are complete and do
Sure.
a line-by-line response, or if Mr. Blackman wants to forward specific questions to my email, I just gave him my business card, so.
Okay, whichever, whichever way you guys work out, and then get back to, either send us the copy of that and we'll proceed from there. Okay, thank you. Any other board comments?
Just one last thing, I, I noticed when we took up that resort project, we gave a lot of discussion about the impacts of the community, and then when it went over to the city council, it, it just saddens me sometimes that, you know, some of our comments are, are often taken out of context, like when they make suggestions about the value that it's gonna add to the city or the number of jobs it's gonna create, you know? The comment was thrown around quite a few times that the planning and zoning board didn't know what they were talking about. When they made their decision, it was based off of the number of jobs it created, and it was outside of their scope. Now, I, I do understand that our scope should be specific to planning and zoning, but it just kind of shows that there is not a mutual feeling of love and respect when they turn around and say things like, we make comments outside of our scope. Definitely, I want to know how many jobs it creates if it's coming into our city, but I, I just want to remind you guys that we, we do have a scope of being with planning and zoning, and it just seems like when it's stated at a different city council meeting that we're outside of our lines when we say we agree with this project because of the number of jobs. So I would just kind of remind you guys, when you make those comments, kind of keep it geared towards planning and zoning as opposed to the financial, I guess, the financial benefit for the city. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, just one comment on that, you know, I, I've listened to, was here for part of and listened to the rest of the meeting, and I think I heard something somewhat a little bit different, and I'd have to refresh it and probably no point in discussing it further, but I thought they said that the planning and zoning board, one of the reasons they wanted to approve or approve the project was that there were a lot of, that there were a number of jobs involved, and I, I don't recall anything other than that on it, but I think we could review the minutes and, you know, and, and solve that. Any other?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd just like to say, we are an advisory board, and by being on the planning and zoning board, when you walk around in your neighborhood, some people, a lot of people know I'm on it because I've been on it for a number of years, they will come up to me with some problems in the neighborhood, Cunningham Park. I kids have nowhere to go in that area. That's why we have shit in every other neighborhood. I asked several years ago for a street light on the intersection of Silvies Road and Avenue West. The county said there wasn't enough traffic going up and down the street. You got those kids coming from Suncoast High School from Kennedy going down that street. They're trying to get them to get on Congress, but you know teenagers, they gonna do what they want to do. We need a traffic light. You have more wrecks in that area than I've seen all over the city. Two police cars have got hit there, I don't know why anybody gets it, but I would like to meet with you sometime, pour the money out, and show you where I tried to get this done, because the citizens are still complaining. And one reason, I like wearing my shirt. If I'm going to a site that's on this agenda, I'm not gonna go on the property. I'm gonna go looking around on the outside of that property, but then neighbors gonna wonder, what is that guy looking for? Why is he standing up there? Why is he taking notes? But if he see that I'm on the planning and zoning board, there will be no problem with people. I mean, Christmas coming up, we have worked faithfully all year. We know you gonna give us a Christmas dinner, but give us a Christmas T-shirt too. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, any project updates? Jeff? No updates, okay. Upcoming meeting, December tenth?
December tenth.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Second.